Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, March 5th, our first budget workshop. Can I please have a motion to open up? So moved, Shanna, second, Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't want to say anything. I mean, I'm just so excited for this.
I know.
I mean, let's just get right into it.
Welcome, everybody, workshop number one. Excited for another budget season, which I'll share some slides at the end, which I think is going to be an interesting one. So, state's doing us, keeping us on our toes this year. So, our agenda, keeping with what we kind of started last year with a little state aid learning, highlight a couple areas there, go over the operational expenditure areas of the budget, and then a last minute addition, kind of a review of what we learned in Albany that are germane to the budget. Spent yesterday, good couple hours on the Capitol, meeting with some legislatures and getting some feedback, so I just wanted to share that with everybody because we had a lot of budget questions. So, first up, a lot happened over February break, and I wanted to share that with you with this foundation aid update and kind of do a chronological order of how the state system works on foundation aid and how that played with governor's numbers and what's coming up. So, our timeframe in the November database, so when the state education department releases all of our information, all the data points, that November database said we were going to get $46.9 million in foundation aid. So, that was great because this would be the first year, we actually had one, the follow-up year for the formula being run for foundation aid, we could kind of predict and expect that early in the budget season to help with planning. As you see, in January timeframe, the governor's proposal came in not at that number. So, it was $629,767 less. It's now in February, mid-February, day after Valentine's Day, actually, we get another update. That's the typical state cycle. With that update, with new numbers, new factors into the formula because they update enrollment, we are up to $47,126,914. So, now the difference has grown, so the governor's proposal hasn't changed, that's still what she's going with. Okay? So, that February database has now increased our reduction to the 853,925.
Sure.
So, if foundation aid formula was to run fully, right now as it stands, it would be $47 million, we should get $47,126.
Correct.
Do we have another, when's our next database run?
So, there isn't another database run. The next number in the sequence would be the legislative aid runs.
All right, thank you.
So, there's the two databases a year. So, I just wanted to point that out to show you that in the month, the governor's proposal has actually grown as a larger deficit for us, if that makes sense.
So, our number, when people ask us how much we're down, our number for all of us at the board is now 853.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just a quick little foundation aid update for everybody. All righty, moving along. So, our original planned learning was around transportation aid 101, because I feel like it's a topic on everybody's mind with zero emission buses, and so I thought, let's dive into the transportation aid and how that all works and, you know, how that would play together. So, really, transportation aid is based on wealth factors, enrollment, and expenditures. The lowest aid ratio you could have as a district is 6.5 percent, or the highest aid ratio you could get is 90 percent. So, those are reimbursements of your expenditures. Here are, there's actually three different formulas for transportation aid that you could pick from. Ratio one, which is called the arwada aid ratio, two is selected, three is enrollment wealth. We are number one. Can anybody guess why there's three?
So, the state can give you the lower amount?
Normally, I would say you're absolutely 100 percent correct, but it's actually the reverse on this idea.
We get the one that gives us the most.
We don't get to pick, it defaults to whichever one gets us the most, but it's the only aid category where there are multiple iterations of formulas. Transportation is a very unique experience in New York State, because transportation in the Adirondacks is a lot different than transportation on Long Island. So, all those factors weigh into these formulas and spits out what's the best number for you. There are districts that actually transport more private parochial students than public school students downstate. So, their formula would be adversely impacted if it wasn't every student in the enrollment formula. So, there are nuances based on, it's really like geographic, so it created three different formulas to kind of balance it out. Paul, you have some updates on your computer. I'm just going to remind you later. So, we are number one, that's the formula, it's property wealth, the 1 and the .51 are sunk, arwada is average daily attendance for all of our students, so it's a ratio of total property wealth to average daily attendance, all divided by the state average, so that $1,037,800 is the average statewide of property value per student enrolled. So, it's benchmarked on the average, that's where, that's that number that comes from.
Is that the average?
It's the average property wealth per enrolled student in the state. They take all of, when we file with the Office of Real Property Tax Finance, all of our assessment data, they take all of that, ship it off to SED, and SED works it with the enrollment, and they create the statewide average. They do statewide averages for everything, every year, so that's the average per pupil in the state. So, one of the other important factors with transportation aid is really, it's based on what we spend, and there's four expenditure categories that we report and the state looks at. First are capital expenditures, which are buses or equipment that is over $5,000 that we report, but we don't do that because they only give you aid on that for five years like it's a bus, so we never report equipment over $5,000 because of that reason. The other one is an operating category, salary and benefits for all your drivers and mechanics, all your supplies, fuel, lubricants, tires, replacement parts, all your contractual things like liability insurance, routing, software, repair contracts, you know, anything you've got to ship out that we can't fix in-house, those are all considered operating expenditures, so we report those. Next up is contract, so we have a contract with BOSI's to provide transportation. Years past, we have also outsourced to first student or Ontario bus, so any of those contracts are in its own category for reporting as well. And then the supervisor's office is the salary and benefits for all the office members, dispatch, routing, supervision, secretarial support. So, those are the four categories we report on for state aid, okay? It gets a little bit more complicated, let's break that down a little further, a fun little exercise, to visualize it for everybody, the most important transportation term that there is. It's called the NAPD, non allowable pupil decimal. So, we have to report this data to the state every three years because we report this, it's called non allowable, so that's the state's way of saying, you can't do that, so we're going to take something away from you, and we have to do this with our routes every three years, and it's very impactful exercise, and we want everybody to visualize that with us. So, if anybody recognizes, this is Spry, the Village of Webster, right there, okay? The rule states that anybody that lives within 1.5 miles of the school is non allowable for transportation. You've got to walk, okay? Not always the case, but that's in essence what the state says. So, we have all the little kids within 1.5 miles, and then there's, there's a Brian over here that's outside the 1.5 miles, okay? Just to visualize, you know, imagine you're, this is a routing, and you've got to pick up all, all the kids. So, I'm going to toggle back and forth. So, here's scenario A. Say there's 60 of those yellow little dots within the 1.5. None of those kids are allowed to be picked up. Say that bus route within that circle is five miles. So, you take 60 kids, times the five miles, get 300. Well, you do it to drop the kids off, you've got to do it to pick them up and take them home, so it gets doubled. So, scenario A is 600 miles non allowable for that bus run. In essence, we do that calculation for every bus run we have, every three years. And then, I'll just go back to remind you about Brian that's outside the boundary.
Is that where you grew up?
There's a lot of Bryans, maybe it wasn't me.
There are a lot of them. So, Brian, we do pay those, so, in the end.
Some we do, some we don't. It all depends on where they are. This is just hypothetical. So, there's a little Brian, and now, we put Brian on that bus, he's outside the 1.5, still the same route, five miles, but now, the factor changes, this were a state, so you've got one kid that is allowable on a bus full of kids that is majority not. So, now you have 59 kids that are non allowable, and instead of multiplying it by the mileage, you multiply it by a 1.5 factor, the 1.5 distance, so you get 88.5. Do that in the morning, do that in the afternoon, that 88.5, times two is 177. By adding Brian outside the circle to that bus run, you just changed everything from being non-audable to bringing it all the way down to 177. That you do for every single bus run we have and report that percentage overall to the state because they use that percentage, as I'll show you coming up in a couple slides, as a deduction for all of our expenditures. I also, I linked what's adable versus not adable, it's kind of fun to see, there is a lot of things that the state will aid for transportation, and then there's a list of things that are not. This links you right to them, you know, we could spend hours going through them, but I just want to, I just put that link there for everybody once we upload this. So, I apologize, I didn't get to you in advance. Did not have a fun few 48 hours over Friday and Saturday. So, what does this look like? Besides that non allowable pupil decimal, the state also says there's other miles you do that aren't allowed. Field trips, love them, they're great, not allowed, we're not going to give you aid on mileage for that. So, the more field trips you do, the more mileage you have increases your ratio of non allowable miles. More athletic trips you do, not adable, that increases those non allowable. Your deadhead miles, so the distance from the garage to start that first pickup, those are all non allowable. If you use the vehicles for any kind of, you know, administrative, so if you're taking a bus down to a service center to get fixed on, those miles have to be tracked, but not allowable. So, they all combine together to form this deduction called other purpose miles. It's actually larger than a non allowable pupil decimal, but that is, there's not much you could do to change that because we could, sorry, we're at 0.4 percent, no more field trips. You know, that's not really programmatically appropriate, but the other one, the non allowable pupil decimal, that's all about how you build the routes, and so you could impact change there. So, how does that impact? Remember the four categories? So, here's some hypothetical expenditures. We have $1.6 million in capital, nine in operating, 1.25 in contract, and a million dollars in the supervisor's office. Right off the top, that other miles, 6 percent, becomes a deduction, highlighted it in bold, get a subtotal. Now that non allowable pupil decimal gets thrown into there, let's subtotal that, that's a deduction. Now, here's the minutia, there's another category, just going to briefly talk about it, other mileage leased to others. So, for instance, to wrap your minds around that is if we give buses in the summer to Parks and Rec for their trip, or turkey trot, things that are, you know, we're kind of renting it out, those other miles, state's like, we're not going to give you aid for those. But that only becomes a deduction, and there's a dollar value calculated with it, off of the operating expenditures. Same thing with if we sell transportation equipment, so when we scrap buses, that comes off of the operating expenditures. So, we have these deductions, subtract it from what we sent in as our total expenditures, multiply it by our aid ratio, and then I did a calculation to show you, 71 percent really becomes 64 with all the deductions. That is transportation aid in a nutshell. When we start going down, there's still, like, where's the EV buses or the zero emission buses? Those would be capital expenditures, and there's still some discussion about where the facilities upgrades would go. Would that be a building aid, or would that also be in transportation aid? So, those capital expenditures could skyrocket, and you could see the impact, those numbers would obviously grow in ratio.
Well, and isn't there a cap as well right now? On, if you were to buy, purchase an EV bus, there's a cap on the price, on what can get aided.
Yeah, so, right. Right now, it's $421,000 is the cap, anything above that gets zero aid, so they would have to take a look at that because a district to our west priced one out that would be similar to what we would probably price out with safety features and, you know, camera systems and internal items on the bus, was $495, one bus. So, it's already $70,000 over the aid max limit, so, yep. So, that is transportation 101, maybe 201, because this, yeah, I got down to the weeds a little bit.
It's an advanced group.
Yeah.
Basically, what you're saying is if you include the student that is within 45 miles, it's an extra use, you know, that's an extra use.
Right, so, one of the, you know, theories, like, you let the software help with it, but maybe there's a Dave over here, and so, you design a run where you grab Dave, and then you come in from this way, and then you go out and grab Brian and come in from this way, so you even limit the non allowable kids even more. You kind of start from out and work your way in, so, yeah. There are some instances where it's just impossible to do clustered around a school that has, you know, heavy highway, that there is no walking, so no matter what you design or do, there's going to be a non allowable, but you, we audit this every year to say, okay, what can we do better on routing? And, you know, if the system at the end spits out a 10 percent non allowable, we're like, whoa, we've got to go take a look at this because that is exceptionally high. So, you know, four to six is probably, you're doing all right.
Brian, do you ever come back and question our budget channel, or do you come back and come and say, or did they ever do that with any districts?
Not that I'm aware of. It's a pretty onerous, like, ours is a nine, it's nine electronic pages of runs that are reported, so it would be a pretty substantial time consuming audit for them to do that for districts, so it passes checks, in essence, it's like, if three years ago you reported a non allowable pupil decimal at 15 percent, and then three years later, it's at two and a half, they're going to give you a phone call? Before we move on to budget, anything else? Any other hot topics for next time?
That was a good lead-in.
All righty, so onto budget, we're going to focus on some of our operational things this evening with some straightforward conversations. First up is our buildings and grounds, 2425 preliminary budget, and a lot of this budget is based off of requests from all of our stakeholders, buildings for work to be done, so we start there, and we get multitude of requests. The one new thing this year is actually with the new work order system that is tied to, you know, our online scheduling system. It was nice to have data at our fingertips when people are submitting things to be fixed or to be worked on or to be planned for, because it really shows how much this group accomplishes daily, weekly, you know, and over months and years now. And so, when we were reviewing this, I was kind of excited to now have, to build on this and go multiple years for when the next time we have our building condition survey, and to see how, how the data in the work order system is going to match up to when they do the review of everything, and to just do that comparison. So, some exciting things with that to help with build our budget this year. This summer will be a somewhat quiet one, you know, we'll just be working on our normal maintenance and requests that have come through, but kind of the calm before the impending unleashing of capital projects. Hopefully, that will be another year away. So, just a couple highlights, equipment, no further increase like we had last year because we're now on a replacement cycle because of last year's increase, so maintaining there. Energy costs, you know, we've had some energy spikes, but we do a very good energy management program, it's kind of why I'm sweating right now, because the AC's not on, so, don't turn that switch on. So, we're able to keep our budget uniform there. The one thing, a couple areas that are going up, BOSI's, we do use a lot of operating software through BOSI's for facilities and security. Our system for entry into the buildings, Raptor, has some cost increases every year, like every software platform we purchase, you know, through BOSI's, you know, ranges anywhere from one to 6 percent annual licensing fees going up. Other cost increases on the salary side, we are projected to have a settled labor contract with the CCMA, which makes up a majority of the buildings and grounds unit, for you guys the springtime for approval, so we do have some concrete estimates to go with for salaries next year, so that's good. We are, you know, I call them cost savers, that energy maintenance plan, anytime we can switch out lights for LED, we're still doing that internally. And then the capital outlay project, the 100K project, which we talked about, a lot about last year because we were very hopeful that the state would improve a increase in the limit to something north of that, 250 was the number that was being bounced around the capital, because, you know, there's not much, especially downstate, you could do for $100,000 that is a public works project, but we're going to take our $100,000 project and start some ADA access upgrades, starting with the Schrader main entrance, and move from there forward to a couple other buildings that could utilize that. So, that is what we're earmarking the 100K for next year for that project. We spend it in one year, and turns around and gets us the aid right away, so it's a little program. Normally, we'd probably do that in-house, so instead of doing it in-house, we're just turning it into an aid maker for the district. Overall, there's the line items, you see salaries, which are still being pressured by minimum wage with this group, especially on substitutes and summer work, those have shot up, so you see that percentage change going up, probably more than is historical, but also goes with the labor market for skilled trades as well, and what we're doing there. The BOSI service, the small $5,000 increase, so overall, this budget for buildings and grounds going up 2.86, able to do everything, hold all of the other line items at zero through the great work of Blaine Cunningham and Neil Flood with the security stuff, you know, and their staff. Questions on buildings and grounds before we hit up transportation? All righty, very good. So, next up is our transportation friends, really three main areas to this budget that really impact is salaries, and we're currently in negotiations with the transportation unit, so that includes all drivers and mechanics, the office staff is not included in that group, so, you know, we're doing our best projection of where we think we'll land with contract negotiations there as part of our budget. Really, no increases projected. We've reduced the size of the fleet, we've done some right sizing, we've talked about that before, our surplus as part of that audit, so we've brought that down, so our line items are able to stay flat, less buses to maintain, so we're able to do that, and less buses to insure, so our insurance line also stays the same. And we've seen our fuel costs start to stabilize and going down, so no need to really, we're able to work within what we've budgeted over the past many years, so not a lot of changes there overall, and so you see a small 1.5 percent increase, a majority of those are salary increases that we're projecting for the overall group, but once again, always looking at right sizing the driver staff based on what's available. No sense in budgeting for our ideal number of 175 drivers, that would just be kind of a wish, and so, budgeting for something that's a little bit more appropriate, and so that's helped as we've looked over the past three, four years to adjust that.
So, Brian, the salaries only, you know, about 2.9 percent, that's what I can hear about. Thank you. Thank you, Erin. For the 2.9, 2.19 percent, that's with contract negotiations you're expecting, because it doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem very high as far as.
Right, and so, that's a great question, and we, right now, have 100 and, I just got back, so hopefully it's still 117 roster drivers, but we've experienced a lot of turnover.
Okay.
So, we, when we do this year to year, you know, we've had some retirements, and Mr. Swinson could probably attest to that, maybe we get a retirement once every two weeks, so, you know, 10, 10 people turning over every year, and so those salaries are coming off, and so, smaller salaries coming on. So, we are experiencing continuous kind of breakage with that group, so even with those increases, it still tamps down the overall increase ratio.
Okay, and, and are you still seeing, it seems like we've been okay with our bus driver staffing as far as keeping it, it's been steady, or do you feel like we still have a big deficit?
We still have a big gap. When I started, so, 10 years ago, we had 161 drivers, and now we're down to 117. You know, I would, in an ideal world, wish that number was 10 percent because we had those 170 drivers, and I could separate Willink and Thomas runs again. The only thing saving Spry and Schrader right now is the distance between the two of them, so they are, you know, on most days in the office, it's the secretary and Renee, and everybody else is out driving.
Okay.
So, they, they're holding it together on a day-to-day, let's say every day's crisis because they're, they're doing it, but we're in a better position than I think a lot of our colleagues around the county still when it comes to issues.
Okay, great.
With shortages.
Thank you.
Yep. Great. All righty, next up is our debt service portion of the budget. So, some changes there this year, some borrowing updates, interest rates are still running high, so a lot of our short-term borrowing, we're projecting the rates to be larger, especially, you know, when we go do our bus borrowing in the fall, that our rates will still be up there, so our interest is going to look like it's staying up there. There is a reduction this year, I just want, it'll be, you'll see it, two projects are now off the books, but there's also an aid reduction to match that, so our building aid is going to come down in concert with this reduction on the budget side. So, it's, I don't like to be like it's free money, like, oh, this is a budgetary savings. Well, the other side Well, the other side of the budget formula also has a reduction to match it. Not to bring up sore subject still, because happy with December of '23. Ideally, we would be talking about uniformity, but that lost years kind of set us back. So I will, you know, we're looking right now that probably in a year or two, it will bounce back up now with the 2023 project. We were expecting more shovels in the ground right away, some early aid starts. So we were expecting to, to do this. But now with a different style of project, with a different scope, a little different scope of work, that's going to change how the, the debt looks. So, you know, was, what's that spike going to look like? We'll have some building aid toss out of it, but if it's too large of a spike, we have a debt service reserve and that's what it could be used for is to help offset some of those principal payments. So it's something I'm projecting for, looking, you know, two budget cycles down, I think, is when that'll really impact us once we get going. And then transfers, we have to do those every year. You see the capital outlay transfer. And then the other transfer to federal, that's the local share of summer mandated programs for students with disabilities. It's an 80/20 split. We transfer a budgetary amount over to the federal fund. And cross fingers that we are as accurate as possible with that. We've been pretty good over the years with the 240 being transferred. Haven't need to change that, that that's been pretty standard. So that, as you could see, the first one up is the construction debt. You see the, the large drop off, almost $2 million. And that will match perfectly, you know, I kind of teased that a little bit when we talked about the governor's proposal being so far off from our building aid that will come back up, but it will be pretty close, same drop in building aid over last year. The bus borrowing, you know, slight increase. You see the interest there. The, the bus bonds are the most volatile because it's a short-term borrowing for five years. So expecting interest spikes there, even with just a small increase in the debt, in the actual debt payment. Just a quick reminder, I know we talked last meeting about our proposal for 2425 actually being less. So that doesn't impact the 2425 budget though, because it's delayed a year. That borrowing is actually happens in 2526. So you'll see that bus borrowing number come down. Hopefully more than before 2728. So just a little transportation EV inside joke.
I caught it.
Hopefully it stays there, it doesn't spike. So just to point that out, that, that's why you see a huge reduction here. Really, we, that timing of our principal construction debt. So just point that out to you. And then our two transfers. Questions on that? Alrighty. Next up is our central services, central office and kind of back office operational things. So really, you know, our largest BOSI's expenditures here are, is our HR and business software packages. Everything we utilize, we buy through BOSI's. In addition to our entire BOSI's administrative budget is part of this budget. So we are the largest portion of Monroe One BOSI's. So we pay the largest portion of their overall administrative budget. And usually, early April is when we see those finalized numbers from Monroe One of what that will be for us. Not projecting that to change too much, but, you know, the, the software packages we're seeing, you know, really anywhere from one to six percent. And we're right in the middle here on that. Business HR, just want to point out, there is one kind of salary change. Most of the staff up here are members of the employee retirement system, ERS compared to TRS. We actually have one employee that is now moving from ERS to the TRS. So it makes the data look a little skewed. So next year, when we're talking, it won't look this skewed. Because you're taking all the ERS salaries, giving those people their contractual raises. But now we're subtracting that one salary out and adding it to a whole different line. So it makes the instructional salaries now look like a much larger increase. So just wanted to point that out when we look at the line item numbers. Public information, our friends there, no changes, just contractual salary increases. We do have a small reduction based on the breakage salaries from the district clerk transaction that are for the Board of Ed. Insurance, these are huge increases. Our student accident and general liability premiums looking to go up about eight percent. Three for the student accident and five for the general liability. So those are, you'll see as increases. And no changes in superintendent's office, just contractual salary increases. He cannot get any more supplies next year. So, yeah, and just to point out those numbers, you see, you see how the BOSI services is the largest part of this budget? And that is the administrative BOSI's budget plus those software packages I was talking about. You see the salary increase change from that one whole salary moving to the instructional side now and coming out of non-instructional. So there, that's the reduction. And then they add supplies and contractuals, like we said, no more supply. And then the insurance increase here. So overall, though, a 2.28%. So, yeah, when you see those transitions between a couple of lines, you know, look at the bottom. Overall, it hasn't changed much, 2.28, so. Alrighty, moving on. Community education, a couple of things here. rave reviews the last couple of weeks for the aquatics. We've had a lot of youth activity going on over there, if anybody got a chance. So two things are really hitting the budget there. Pool chemicals, so you'll see an increase in the supply line here. The bid costs, we've just, they're up, the cost of chlorine. Anybody that owns a, a pool has experienced that over the past couple of years. And then the uniform pricing too for lifeguarding has also increased. Kind of tie that to athletics. That's the one area we've seen the last two years when people said, what are those supply chain items that have really, really spiked? It's athletic uniforms and athletic equipment. And with that is, you know, swimsuits and the athletic uniforms that we, you know, give to the lifeguards. One thing for the future too, that I think we're going to be able to do in-house, but just want to point it out is, you know, it's, the building is, it's getting up there. It's over two decades old now. And look to probably do the mechanical pump system, probably do that in-house as well. So this is something, facilities-wise, update specific to the Aquatic Center. That would need to get done. But pool will need to be trained and it'd be offline for a few weeks. So trying to find the right time to do that. And then on our community education side, more supervisors for field usage. We are, we are close to a 24/7 operation for field and building usage. And just, you know, one of our standards is to provide supervisors for a lot of these community events to help with traffic, crowd control. You know, there is occasionally pushback from community groups that are utilizing it, but, you know, you don't know you need it until you need it. Because, you know, something goes awry, you know, oh, we've lost power. Who do we call? Oh, we have supervisors that have all the contacts. You know, traffic incident, something in the parking lot, oh, supervisors are out there taking care of it. So, you know, we are, we have some additional funding for that because it just doesn't, it's not stopping with the usage of our, you know, doesn't slow down, so. So the line items there, you see salaries about three and a half percent. And then the small increase for supplies for, so overall, our budget is going up 3.7. You know, and of course, you know, our part-time lifeguards and instructors, our college kids getting increases year over year as well impacts that. Alright, the next meat and potatoes is the employee benefits. Before I start there, any questions on those areas? No new positions being added. I would have highlighted those. Everything is status quo as far as FTEs in those areas as, as a reminder as well.
I'll just add while you're going on the next slide about the mechanical pump there. We actually, I don't know if you guys knew this or not, but we had one of our neighboring districts reach out to us this year during swim season because their pump went down in the middle of swim season. And so we couldn't help them unfortunately, because we didn't have any pumps hanging around either. But it was going to, it was a backlog on a higher, purchasing a pump of over a month. And so they were without a pool during swim season. So trying to make sure we're not in that position, so I'd like, that's great.
Alrighty. So employee benefits is a huge chunk, you know, with 16, over 1,600 employees. Employee benefits is the second largest part of the budget. So just want to highlight some things. But I'm going to start with a huge win for us this year. I'm going to highlight workers' compensation. You know, it's come a long way from days of just hanging on over the Empire State Building. We have our first savings in over five years since 2018, 19. We're seeing a decrease in our workers' comp bill. And it's all cyclical. It's based on claims and an average of your year. So we had an, a year, a high claim year that has dropped out of our calculation. So it's been recalculated and we're seeing a savings there. So very excited about that. And then just to go back, going to highlight on TRS and ERS, healthcare, dental, and some of our other plans as well. But I was just too excited, I had to get to that workers' comp news. The most shocking, I think, for me this year was when we first got in September from the Comptroller about the employee retirement system rates going up as much as they were. So this is what our projected bill will be for ERS. And I'm going to show you some data and maybe put it into context. So about a 1.5% increase in the rate over last year. Because even though the rate changes, it's still based off of salaries. So we look at a salary projection of all of our ERS members and run that rate against it and to come up with a budgetary number. So it's not just changing the rate year over year because, you know, there's salary fluctuations. And then our TRS bill, slight, it's actually a slight increase. I thought I changed that, over last year. So my apologies for that typo. It is an increase in rate over last year. So a couple of things to look at there is, you know, why is it surprising? It's because the market returns have been fairly decent. So to have such a huge increase in the ERS bill besides was, was kind of shocking.
Yeah, if you go out and go back in, I think it's changed. Now project. There you go.
It's funny how that happened.
You were right.
So just to kind of put it into context, the teachers' retirement system, the average rate for districts has been just about 10.8% since 1978, going all the way back. So actually, the rates right now are trending below the historical average. So it is next year projected to be 10.02% of total TRS payroll. That was a very slight change this year, which, you know, not shocking. But the real surprising one was ERS shooting to 15.2% of payroll. So 2.1%. So their average has actually been a little lower at 9.97% since 1978. But you could see TRS is remain, what I would say has remained historically high in comparison to previous years. And I know part of that is the Comptroller is the, it's the one-person show as far as control of that system, as opposed to TRS has a governing board with more input. And the Comptroller is much more conservative in the last few years with life expectancy rates. You know, people are living longer, so they're adjusting all the life expectancy rates, adjusting the rate of return. They always thought an eight percent rate of return year over year into the system. Adjust that down, I believe, to now six percent. So that impacts rates. So this one was the most surprising, which didn't give us much flexibility on the benefits budget this year. Our total increase is 4.03% when you look at all the line items. Health actually is, I'll take a 2.96% healthcare increase all day long. That is very good news for long-term planning for the district. The, you know, the smaller the increases there, leaves us greater flexibility to do more things in other parts of the budget. A lot of this is due to the transition to our RASH One Plan. And the savings realized there has helped drop that down. So you see the $150,000 in savings and then the increases to ERS and TRS. And then I always want to point out, the FICA are, you know, our payroll portion of Medicare and Social Security goes in lockstep with salary increases. So thinking maybe overall, our salaries are going to land about 4% district-wide. So FICA will go up with that accordingly. Some other small changes here, our FSA plans, the administrative costs for, for utilizing have gone up a little bit, so little changes there. And we're seeing an increase in buyouts. We've added it to a couple of different bargaining units. Have now, but have buyouts in their system as part of their contract. So some increases there as well. Overall, I like this visual graphic just to show you how much each group is. You see the TRS and ERS and FICA and health insurance are the dominating line items as part of the healthcare budget. All budgets presented this evening are just slightly under 95 million. So 94.9495 is our total this evening. And then before we wrap up, just want to have a little discussion on a couple of notes from Albany this past weekend. I went with the Monroe County School Boards Group. Brian joined us to facilitate conversations with some state leaders, both in the Assembly and Senate and in various departments at State Ed and within the legislative branches. So just wanted to touch on a few things because it was, it was very dour mood expressed by everybody on the relationship between the legislative and executive branches, which everybody was then all signs pointing to, don't expect an on-time budget this year. So to kind of get ourselves ready for that. Our dates don't change. We have to do what we have to do regardless. So we'll have to, you know, do our best projection at when the time comes. We have built into our calendar some time to adjust between Workshop Three and Budget Adoption. We do have a little time if we had to, you know, get the group together and talk about the workshop or do another workshop or try to, you know, best plan with the information we have. But it was, that was a pretty clear message is we don't anticipate them coming to agreements on things very quickly. Especially with Foundation Aid, because that was kind of eye-opening. There's going to, that fight has begun between all the groups, especially on the Hold Harmless provisions. And I think that was spurned some of the sour mood because the legislature, in their opinion, this, they put this to bed, we solved this problem. And now we got to go through this again. And so that's what created some angst, especially with 337 districts in the Hold Harmless. So it's gotten everybody's attention and it's going to drain a lot of the education conversation. Don't predict, there's going to be a lot of other updates to education because of that. And so that was one of the things that jumped out to us. Brian, was there anything else you want?
Yeah, I think that's a great segue into the conversation around, we heard from the commissioner this morning herself. And this is a cut, flat out, this is a cut. And that's what she said. You know, I think when we listened to some of the State Ed people yesterday, they were saying the same thing. But then when you potentially go, what she's trying, the, the executive office is trying to relay this as.
this is not a cut, we're just not giving you as much as we had once said we might give you, which is another way to look at it, but that is not what Commissioner Rosa is saying at all. She's saying, make no qualms about it, this is a cut. And so we talked to Christina Coughlin as well as part of that advocacy yesterday. And she's very upset and she's in the, our Chief Financial Officer for State Ed because the other thing that we kind of learned was they were surprised. Like State Ed was surprised, but so was the Governor's Education Department. Because they had had many conversations from November through and everybody was kind of taken back and blindsided a little bit by this. So word to surmise potentially that this was the Department of Budget that potentially came out with some of this information. Again, this is why the, we are all rallying the troops around, you know, whether it's Monroe County School Boards, whether it's our retired school board members, whether it's our New York State School Board members, whether it's our teachers' unions and our SANEES and NISCIS. Everybody's at this point, all hands on deck collaborating to say, listen, we had one full year finally of the Foundation Aid formula being fully funded and it's not going to be now at this point unless it gets restored, which is back to segue to Brian.
And I, and the analogy I thought of when we were up there is if you remember when the tax cap became law. If you think of a district like, like a Webster or any suburban district, in essence, what the tax cap did was make us fight for state aid. Because before the tax cap, state aid was not important to a lot, to half the districts in New York State. So, you know, if a district wanted to offer a fifth foreign language and the tax levy went to 6%, but if that's what the community wanted, they passed a 6% levy change. That district did not need to go to the State Education Department and beg for state aid to make that happen. It was very community-based. Do you want to add this program? This is what it's going to cost? This is what it'll do to the levy? Do we want to move forward or not? And there was the yes, or no, the budget went down, take it out, okay. That was the whole, you know, philosophical look versus the communities that really needed state aid and depended on it, that couldn't ask that question, they got state aid. Now everybody's capped. It took the districts now that continue to want to do that, but now they can't ask that question to their community because they were capped no matter what. And that mentality changed everything. So it turned everybody to now, we all had to, if we wanted to add something, we all had to turn to the state and ask for more aid. So instead of 337 districts asking for aid, it's now 700 districts asking for aid. The same thing is now happening with this Hold Harmless. Because it's now pitting two distinct regional type of groups against everybody else for state aid. I'm a bit of a pessimist. I think it was a planned reason, but that's just me. So that's kind of, I think, the comparison to how this is shaking out. Because it's pretty clear when you filter the districts of it's who is targeted with this. So.
Regional groups, are you talking downstate, upstate, or are you talking?
Rural versus.
Rural versus, okay. Urban versus suburban?
It's, there is some suburban that is impacted. Urban is not. It is mostly a rural and Long Island type.
So the other two, there's two things that we're hearing that potentially, potentially why the Governor's doing this and her office, I should say, is doing this. And the number one thing is the housing that she really wants to make a push in the state around housing. And I think that she's going to try and use potentially, okay, I'll give you some money back here, but then we're going to also put some money towards the housing, her housing initiatives in the dis, in the, in the state. That's one. The other one that it more affects schools and school districts and communities is regionalization. And so we heard that term at NISCIS several times in the last three days. To the point where we, there's one session that we usually attend and it's a roundtable session. And they usually have five or six different topics from State Ed set up. And they give you about 15 minutes to move from table to table to go and talk to those. This is the first time that there was a table on regionalization. And we went and we listened and more of it was, well, what are your thoughts around regionalization? Because we believe that this concept is something that the Governor wants us to really explore more. And we've heard that straight from the Governor as well about a month ago. So those are the two things that we think we may get this money. You know, the Foundation Aid may be restored, but I think this is kind of a, you know, hello, wake up. And this is the two things that we want to, you to be thinking about. So.
Right. And then the.
No, I didn't know if Erin or Dave or anybody wanted to add anything more to that from their sessions. So.
And then the last interesting tidbit was on the zero emission buses is gaining steam and grabbing people's attention. The scary conversation was is waiting to fail before they do anything. Yeah. And so that was, came across loud and clear, like going to go to the edge of the cliff and then do something. Or if not, other districts that are, the districts out in front, let them fail and then we'll make changes. The other very interesting part that now is starting to get people's attention is overriding voters. Because now there is data, three districts this past year put up propositions to buy EV buses. And overwhelmingly, the local voters said no. So it's now on their radar because are they going to override a vote of the constituents and the public to make this happen?
So we'll keep our eye on one local district in our, in our county that is actually going to have two propositions they're going to put to their community. They've got one proposition that's got eight buses in it, eight diesel buses in it. And then a second proposition which has one EV bus. And so they're trying to say, okay, community, tell us where we are as well. And so we'll keep our eye on that.
Yeah. And the, and the part for us is, you know, if they don't change the dates to the last minute, that's going to have an economic impact. So if we got to look at 27, 28 as our drop date, that's when we put the first proposition up. Before then, we're, we're doing capital planning. We've already started that conversation on capital planning to get around this. We're going to put hundreds of thousands of dollars into studies and infrastructure to get this started and then get to a point where, oh, yeah, by the way, you don't have to worry about it for 15 years or don't have to do it when we've just blown, you know, a quarter of a million dollars on, you know, electrical studies and fleet management studies. And it's all, hey, all right, you guys were right. But we just, you know, what could we have done with that money instead after the fact? And that was the most disheartening part of the conversations we had. Because we're going to have to spend, we know we're going to have to spend money to hit these targets. And then the rug will be pulled or something major will change. So.
What does waiting to fail mean?
Say it again?
What does waiting to fail mean? What, failure can be catastrophic.
Yeah.
Before they change anything, like it's not going to, they're not going to change the law.
Stuff blowing up, right?
Oh, yeah. There could be a thermal event. Yes.
That's the new word. Thermal event. It's not a fire. It's a thermal event.
I'd let somebody else be the guinea pig. Sorry.
Yeah. I mean, what does waiting to fail mean? It'd be like, because we all submit our projects for review. And there's a list and like, okay, how many districts can actually get buses? It's 27, 28. We put in an order for 20 electric buses and they don't come. So now what do we do? You know, that isn't probably the best example of, you know, waiting to fail. Like, oh, we can't do it. Or the first district that thinks they have, you know, buys 15 of them, thinks they have it all set up, goes to plug them in and the lights turn off in half the town. You know, and that becoming, you know, that's the waiting to fail.
Which they, we learned they have to be shipped somewhere else to be repaired by somebody in a hazmat suit. We learned that the other day.
That is true.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You mentioned regionalization and I, pardon my ignorance, but what does that concept mean?
Great, great question. It could mean a bunch of different things. And I think that's what State Ed's saying right now is that they would like it to come more from the field and ideas and innovative concepts. So it could be, you know, an area, maybe a rural area that enrollment has really declined. And they say, okay, maybe the elementary schools stay where they are, but there's a regional high school. But there's a lot of logistics around that. And right now, I mean, I asked the question this morning at the table and said, okay, in the last 10 years, how many mergers have we had in the state, successful mergers, I should say? We've had one. I can't tell you what that one was. They did say the name, but I didn't recognize it. But there have been a ton of failed situations, opportunity, or votes. Because there's three steps to it. And I didn't know this, but there's a, there's a straw vote, which doesn't mean much, but it's a, it's a, it's the first vote.
It's a check-in.
It's the check-in vote. Then there's the board vote from both districts or multiple districts if there's three. And then there is the public vote. And what they've seen is if it gets past the board vote, it is gone down on the public side. But it hasn't always gotten past the board vote because if you've got three school districts, all three of those boards of educations need to vote for it, vote positively.
And there is actually a tremendous amount of extra aid for districts to do this. There is an incentive to do this and it's still, they go down. I, I studied this at my former district and did the aid calculation to start that conversation. And that's 13 years ago. But it, the same person that, you know, doesn't like school taxes is also the person that hates to lose the school in their community.
In rural communities, you could be on the bus for an hour just to get to school. I can't imagine traveling even further, trying to get kids.
Yeah. And that's all part of the discussion of who is.
Hour and a half on a bus.
Is there, is it the Wizard of Oz in Albany that has a map of all the school districts that takes a magic marker to borders and does it that way? Or is it a conversation about, you know, through our regional BOSIs? Like we already have kind of a regional concept. And so are they part of the conference? So there's a lot of talk about that. But the reason why it's the talk is because everybody thinks the Hold Harmless was in essence, an economic gun to say, you better start doing this.
Yeah.
Is what is spurring the conversation.
So actually, could you take like 30 seconds and tell, explain again, what is the Save Harmless concept?
Right. So as part of, Save Harmless is in essence, if you got, whatever you got last year, you got the same amount plus 3% is usually what it worked out to be for districts, regardless of the enrollment in your formula. So for a district like Webster, you saw, we got increases because our enrollment change, our numbers change. But if you're in a smaller district that says, say, says 500 to 600 kids and your enrollment's dropping, your property values aren't going to change that much. All those other economics that go into the formula are going to be pretty stagnant. So your formula's not going to change. But the one thing that's going to drop your number is enrollment. So there's always the Hold Harmless provision that even if your numbers went down, you still got what you got last year plus like a CPI increase. So that is in essence what Hold Harmless is.
And her, the way, oh, sorry.
No, I was just thinking, because even if you have, you know, a reduction in your enrollment, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to be letting teachers, exactly, all that staff go and infrastructure and, and so.
Right. And that's part of the challenge because the Governor's rhetoric, her and some of her staff, is that we're paying for seats that aren't filled right now when she's not taking into consideration all those other things as well. So there's just some conversations and, you know, that needs to kind of happen in that regard. So.
I said she feels, fills the seats with other mandates.
Right.
Yeah. I know. And especially because I feel like we fight that narrative already with our community. That narrative of if you have a reduction in, in attendance, then our budget should be going down as well. And it's not reality. It definitely does not help the situation.
Yeah. And a lot of that is, you know, we've brought on 350 UPK students to fill, you know, we, we have the room, we did it. So that space is gone and, you know, it's almost like we had no enrollment decrease. Same thing with, we were kept special education programs in-house versus shipping them to, to BOSIs. That takes space, that's dollars, that's staff. So versus out of sight, out of mind.
Plus people want reduced class sizes. So they're asking for, you know, more classrooms.
Increased mental health. So, so yeah. So, thank you.
It's always fun going to Albany. So next up is our workshop number two, where we'll focus on a lot of the instructional areas. So just to give you a heads up on that, thanks to our budget team members that helped build these portions of the budget. Any other questions this evening?
Just how much, how much traction has the regional school concept been given?
I think we're at the beginning phases of it.
Are they, are they talking like?
I'll equate it to this, how hard have some of the districts held on to their name changes? I mean, there's districts that are suing over losing warriors, losing Braves, losing. So you met that district having to consolidate with the rival for the last 75 years next door. They're going to be very difficult type conversations.
Is the push more for rural schools as opposed to suburban for that?
It could go either way. I mean, I think there's a lot, like on Long Island, there's a lot of K-6 districts, a lot of K-8 districts, 912 high school districts. So there's regionalization already kind of happening. Like, like think of closest to us Wyoming, you know, as a K, they're K-8. Lynn Court in Syracuse is a K-8. They send their kids out for high school. So there's possibilities around that aren't, you know, typical rural. So I think the conversation's going to be all encompassing.
Yep, I agree. Agreed.
This is a different concept than a countywide school district.
Yes.
Correct, right? This is not that.
Well, that's a great question because that, that exact question was asked this morning to the regionalization person at the table and they said, nothing's going to be off the table for us. Nothing's going to be off the table. But it doesn't mean, I think from their perspective, it might mean that one county, maybe it's Wyoming County, that believes in that model or that model could work for Wyoming County, but it doesn't need to be everything else in the state. So that's what they meant is nothing's off the table for the innovative concepts is what they were talking about. So.
So we'll see. And the last thing too is they don't want to study the formula, Foundation Aid formula, because they are scared of what that new number would be.
It's going to be more.
Is this, is this something that we should be talking to our families about and, and helping them to advocate for us on our behalf? I mean, Foundation, that's, we talk about Foundation Aid so much during the budget process, right? And, and last year it was great news, it's fully funded. And now we have this issue again. So is it something that we speak with the families about and we try to do some advocacy on that level?
I, nothing hurts. I guess we could have those conversations.
The first time this, I remember. The first time that it happened in a PTA, it wasn't until it was mentioned at a PTA meeting that other parents even knew what was going on. So I definitely feel like educating the public and.
And I'm just thinking, because March is usually PTSD meetings on me. And so maybe it's something that we bring to them because we've done it in the past. We, we've done letter writing campaigns and I think it's important. We've advocated with our legislators. So I think it's, okay. All right. That's what we need to do.
Brainstorm some ideas.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I do think that legislation has definitely heard the word. But it doesn't hurt, nothing, nothing more hurts at all, ever hurts. But I know that they're, they're in a situation of advocating right now for us too. So.
But I think, you know, maybe the Governor hearing, it, it sounds like she's in her own little silo and she's not listening to everyone.
Well, and it's true because sometimes it's, it's parents that actually can make a very big noise. We heard about going back to electric buses. One of the things that State Ed was telling us this morning was if we could help somehow get utilities to actually be the ones that are making the noise to the Executive Office, that will help more than, it just helps more, I guess.
But I also think electric buses, you know, we talk about it, but families are like, that's in the future. I don't think people realize how quickly these deadlines are coming up. And I, I think we're all kind of in the community doing our own thing, looking at a Tesla here and there. But it, there's no, so I, I do think we have to, we have to educate our community to let them know.
Well, as liaison to the zero emissions committee, that is what we're working on.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, these are the things with all of those components.
So when it, when it comes to the electric buses, are there, for the districts that went all in so far on it in terms of purchasing some of the buses, are there lawsuits associated with it or?
Yeah, nobody's gone all in yet. I think the most ordered I've seen so far is five, a district of the capital region.
Just in terms of its ties to the state and if the, if from an infrastructure perspective, that communities aren't ready, but it's being put out there, if there's legal ramifications for pushing it onto schools?
All a possibility.
One quick number, there's less than 100 EV buses on the road right now in New York State. School district buses or school buses, I guess, BOSIs.
Any other questions? All right. Last quick update, next Tuesday, the 12th is our regular business meeting. The following Tuesday, March 19th is budget number two, as Brian mentioned. And then it is spring break after that and the eclipse. All right. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn the workshop, please? So move Charlie, second.
Second.
Linda, all in favor? Thank you.